It's five thirty four. Oh, are we recording yet?
We are right now.
All right. Welcome everyone. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. I will enter- entertain a motion uh for the approval of tonight's agenda. So moved.
So I can-
Having a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Um we'll go ahead and move um to the BPA to Nationals discussion item. Where does this stand right now?
Um so our practice in our district has been that we support kids going to state, but we have not had, we've not supported kids going to Nationals. They've fundraised and have taken care of that. Under the last superintendent, we have sent teams to Nationals and I didn't know that. Um and so we have our BPA kids who went to state. We had a couple of teams at each school qualified to go to Nationals. They did, they did some fundraising. Um parents donated air miles um for people who couldn't afford to go. And so airplane tickets have been purchased, hotels have been purchased. Um there, it happens to be in Anaheim, so Disneyland tickets have been purchased. Um and uh but the, the way that CTE funds work, um there is an allowable expense for the advisors to use up, uh up to ten percent of their CTE budget for travel, for teams to go to state and to Nationals. And so Becky had been allowing that to happen over the last six years. I wasn't aware of that. So I, I gave Mr. Jarston a little bit of a blood pressure check because I, I said, um, "We don't, we don't do this." And he said, "But we have been." So they did everything that they were supposed to do with regard to how we do, how we secure travel and all of that. Um and because the parents have, I did reach out and ask Board Chair Thompson just, "We don't have policy that says we don't send kids to Nationals," but it's been our practice. And so I, I just felt that in this situation, because the parents and the kids had already done fundraising and have purchased the tickets, um I didn't, I didn't want to create a situation where they were gonna be out money. Um so I, I did sign um for the two advisors to um go with their teams to Nationals. Um so I just wanted to have a discussion, I guess, with the board to see what this board wants to do moving forward. And if, if we want to continue the practice of not um using district dollars to send um teams to Nationals, I, I just think we need to have something in writing so that um everybody knows what that standard is going to be. So I just asked Board Chair Thompson if we could have a discussion.
So they get the CTE funds from the state and part of those funds can be used for, is that for team travel or is that just for advisor travel?
For advisor travel and they, they can use some of the funds. And I asked both of the advisors to be here in case there were questions I couldn't answer for you. Um they can use some of those funds to pay the registration fees for the teams to go to Nationals, which they did do. So the teams didn't have to fundraise for the Nationals, for the registration. But we have had other, other teams who have come to the board with asking for help to go to Nationals prior to the former superintendent and those were denied. And so even the advisor had to fundraise and go or use their own money to go. So this was just an anomaly, but um it is the intent of CTE for kids to participate in these competitions because it helps build their skill set. And so um I just felt like it warranted a discussion.
Has there been an instance, or could there be an instance in the future of a group that does not have this kind of state funding to rely on for the sponsor? And therefore would have to find other means to fund their travel expenses?
Um I'm sure that there are definitely opportunities. The last group, um I was still principal at Bitik for when this happened, but we had a group that won um the state uh competition in robotics. And won a berth to Nationals and the board said no, that they would not um provide any funds for that. So they did fundraise. They, they went to Nationals and won a berth to the Internationals. They, they ended up going to one of the Scandinavian countries if I remember correctly. And they did all of that on their own. So it doesn't happen often, I don't think, but the potential is there. So I just wanna make sure that we're- we're um being consistent with, and as I said, it's not written in policy, it's just in practice. It is, I will say this is a, an academic team. It's not an athletic team.
Right.
So we're, we're supporting and we've-
I, you know, and where I'm going with that question obviously is, you know, how do we be fair and equitable to each and every group?
Well, the CTE-
If assuming we're willing to at least sanction their going to Nationals.
Right. The CTE funds, they can't use to fully fund the travel for kids. So beyond state competition, they would have to um do their fundraising to be able to get to where they're going. So we could look at providing, it's hard to say we're gonna provide the funds for the advisor to go, but we're not gonna provide the funds for the kids to go and put that burden on the parents. But that's in essence what this, what the CTE allows us to do.
Well, the CTE, the document you provided, it does say that it's not allowed for individuals to do travel expenses and travel fees. So-
So we could use it for registration, but we can't use it for-
Right.
But it does allow for, specifically allows for the advisors' travel.
Well, it's also available for lodging, conference registration fees, mileage and lodging, which I don't understand that. And then to come down and say that it's not allowed for travel fees and expenses seems to be kind of contradictory. Oh, wait a minute. I'm misreading that. It's the instructor travel costs and fees related to the student activities. So none of this money is supposed to go to the students.
Right, but we could pay the registration.
That, that's what I was told by Colby.
So the travel costs we can't pay, but we were able to use the dollars for registration for the team. This conversation will probably come up again because we have, like our Tiger TV kids go to Seattle for the Emmy awards, which is probably, definitely not a state competition because it's outside of Idaho. Um but we have used CTE funds um to help with that also. So um this will, this will be recurring as far as the CTE side of it. Our kids perform well at the state level.
As an aside, uh assuming, you know, we continue to sanction kids going on these longer trips, national trips, whatever, I assume we have the same liability risks as in-state travel?
Um I don't know the answer. I can check. Because I, I would assume that it would be because it's a school sanctioned, even though we're not paying the trick kids' travel, it's only a school sponsored activity.
You know, it's just, I, I guess in the back of my mind, I think, you know, if we send a group of kids to Washington DC, that's not the most healthy environment. You know, so the potential for things seems to me gets a little greater in those situations.
Do you mean not a healthy environment because of just the, where they're going?
Yeah, Washington DC is uh has a significant crime problem. So that's-
That's, okay. Just wanna make sure that's what you meant.
That's, that's New York and other places. So my concern is for the safety and there's also liability issue.
Mm-hmm. I can do some uh checking on that and bring that back. Um again, I wasn't anticipating any decisions and I just wanted to bring this to the board's um attention.
Since this is a discussion item, I assume we can take it under advisement.
Mm-hmm. Oh, absolutely. It's just um when Lisa had called me about it, I told her that, you know, she can make the decision. She just needs to let the board know what's going on. So that's, yeah, that's why it's under discussion.
Yep. But I do think that would be good moving forward if um this board would kind of weigh in and make it clear.
Do we want to have any further discussion on the BPA to Nationals?
I think putting together a, a policy of, of-
Okay.
Yep. So that, that way it's treated the same every time. It's not just, "Oh, sure, this group can go, but this group can't." Um yeah.
Right, these should be fair enough.
I mean, these are dollars that are specifically allowed to be used for advisors. Um and if kids are doing the fundraising because their team wants to go, I don't have a problem making sure that they can get there with their advisor, like raising those dollars that are, but let's just-
I will uh find out when our liability is moving to state, if that's different than if we're in state. Is there any conversation or what?
So we're gonna write a policy to reiterate what the document on this is?
Well, um-
This would be a district, our own district's decision to decide if we are going to allow those dollars to be spent. They are allowable through the states giving that money, but we are, we are saying as a district policy, will we allow that?
That, that isn't like-
And we have a group that, you know, doesn't come under that, but qualifies to go somewhere across country. Do we handle it differently or handle it the same?
Or would be different. They don't qualify.
They are-
They're a totally different group. Yeah. Uh I mean, it's pretty clear with the instruction that the funds are given. Um I have noticed that there has been some uh within the district um in the past, and maybe that's just the way it is, is, you know, receiving these funds from the state or other entities specifically for this reason, but then the district decides, "Oh, no, we're, we're not gonna use it for that." Well, that's the only reason we're getting it.
Mm-hmm.
You know, whether it's some kind of stipend for a teacher or like these CTE funds or, I mean, if it's, you know, I, I guess they're not um restricted use because it doesn't seem that way. But if they're earmarked, you know, saying, "Here's how you qualify to get them," I mean, it would be only fair, I think. I mean, if that's where they go for it, if the other group doesn't have funds, you know, provided by the state or whomever, I mean-
Then they can fundraise for the advisors' trip as well, as well as the students.
Right. Right. Right, because what I don't wanna get into is that I was made aware when I first came onto the board, maybe the second year, that there was a school in our district where the PTU had raised funds um for a certain type of equipment. And the administration then decided that it wasn't quote equitable to the rest of the district. And so that school was told, "No, they could not use those funds for that." So I don't wanna see that, you know, everybody doesn't get a participation trophy.
Mm-hmm.
And it's just the way it is. If your group falls under these funds, I mean, it's earmarked for that. You know, so yeah, spend, spend it on that, you know. Um I guess that's what the policy could say, you know, nicer, you know.
More eloquent.
Nicer terms.
I thought it was greater terms, remember?
The only reason I brought it up was because um prior to the, prior to us getting the funds and, and the former superintendent, the pa, the practice of the district had been that we support kids going to state but not Nationals. So that's why I'm asking the question.
No, I think we should support the kids as much as we can. I mean, if they're-
As far as, as well.
That's a lot of work, you know, a lot of commitment for young people to make on their own that aren't-
Well, and they raised money in a very short amount of time.
Yeah. No, I think that's awesome. I think we should be encouraging them to do all of that, especially when they're taking initiative. We so need that in young people today.
Okay. I will bring back the answer to the question about the liability if they leave state, if that's a different liability level. But thank you.
Yeah, thanks for uh, yeah, bringing it to us.
Thank you guys. And you are free to go.
You don't have to. We're not telling you, you gotta go, but-
Well, you did say before everybody got here, "Thank you for having us first on the agenda." Gonzaga is playing tonight.
Oh, yeah.
Have a good night, you guys.
Thank you.
Nope.
Yeah. Tuck, tuck.
Yeah, we shouldn't be here much longer then. Moving on to the other discussion item, the budget schedule. Um given the situation that Brian's leaving April thirtieth,
Mm-hmm.
um I feel very prudent that we need to kind of map out when we wanna spend time invested in understanding the budget, figuring it out, because that should be impacting IBV negotiations, yes. Because if we don't know what the buckets are and how much dollars are in the buckets, um how do you even know what to negotiate?
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Um so I didn't want to just like start putting dates on the calendar. I figure we all need to kind of weigh in on how much time you wanna be committed to it, um what days work best, et cetera.
I think this is a really, really good opportunity for the six of us to work together on the busch, on the budget, for the board to really see all the line items and where things are going and what it looks like budgets to actual. And then also to be able to set some of your own priorities. Because what we've been doing historically is rolling everything over.
Right.
Um and this will give us an opportunity. I did ask Brian to roll over the um, the personnel costs
Mm-hmm.
because those are gonna basically stay the same. Um but, you know, if, if we're gonna have a line item for curriculum in the budget, then we together get to figure out where does that money come from um and what's left for the other priorities that the board has. So I think it's actually gonna be a good opportunity.
Well, and I mean, there's, I, I'm already confused
Imagine that.
on uh the CTE dollars. Because we budgeted uh eighty-three thousand seven hundred dollars, but yet the spreadsheet shows we're at ninety-two thousand. So I don't understand why we have a budgeted amount, but then, oh, lo and behold, they have more that they're working with, but that's not what's on the budget. So I personally would like to understand, you know, the why, number one. And if that happens, and better understanding why that's, you know, not kind of being set off to decide to be used for next year's budget or, you know-
And we can certainly make those decisions. But you know, when we, when, when we go through this process together, we're going to be making some kind of guesses because a lot of our funding for staff comes from guessing at what the um, the average, the weighted average that we're gonna have, because they don't just put everybody in boxes and say, "Okay, you have ten people here, so you get this much for each." They just look at where you all are and then they say, "The average of the people we're gonna pay for is this amount."
Right.
And so sometimes you guess low and sometimes you guess high. And I, and I'm, um, I'm guessing that that's kind of what happened with the CTE is Brian put the budget in based on um the, what we got last year. And then we got a little bit more from the state, so-
Right.
But then the question is, what do you do with that extra thirteen thousand dollars that you didn't budget for that we have? I think that's what you're asking.
Basically. And then to, to know that we've um gone over budget with what we paid K-Tech, well, if those CTE dollars are in alignment with K-Tech, that would offset the shortage that we have. But that's not what we're doing. We're running short over here and extra money's going over here and nobody knows about it. And that's just, I think, more frustrating than anything else.
That's why I think it'll be good for us to do it all together. Because like what I think happens is at the end of the year, everything's general fund dollars. And so at the end of the year, they, they, everything kind of gets trued up. And then whatever's left over from that big bucket is what ends up in that fund balance.
Mm-hmm.
Um where maybe I think what you guys are wanting more of is, are we, are we track, how are we tracking on some of these big line items and um what are we doing about it? So instead of just waiting till the end and then balancing it all out,
Right.
um we're having conversations as we go.
Right, yep, absolutely.
So.
Does anybody have any input on how much time they want to invest? How much um what-
How much time do you think it's gonna take?
Yeah.
Those of you who have done this before.
I have not done it for schools, so it's very, what I, my experience is different than, um, so I don't know.
Three sessions.
Three sessions. How much time?
Couple hours each?
Eight, no, a couple hours each session. I think we can do it. Might take a couple months for me to catch up.
I'm a dayer.
It might be a couple months, right?
But what, so what will be a little bit challenging for us and maybe the first meeting is just rolling our sleeves up and trying to understand all the papers and the numbers and everything.
Right.
Um the post legislative road show happened on April twentieth and I saw that uh the clerk sent that out to you guys. Lynn and Brooke and Chelsea and I have signed up to go for the district, but it might be helpful for a couple of board members to attend also because they'll go through every single piece of new legislation and the formula that's attached to each of those dollar amounts so that we can start to figure out how much of that bucket we're gonna get.
According to the email, only one of us can go.
Oh, really?
Mm-hmm. That is, that's what it said in the email.
The School Board Association, all the administration can go, but we'll only take one for them.
Yeah, there you go.
Imagine that.
I don't think they really check. Like I go every year and they never, they never check.
They never used to.
No. If two of you want to go, then two of you can go. If you, three of you wanna go, then Rosanna just-
Yeah, that creates a different combination. If three wanted to go, but two- We'll be on our own road show.
We went through a show.
Hey, I bet you we could draw a crowd.
Like a train wreck. You can't look away.
Nice. Okay. So building off of three, what particular days might work for people? Or we could basically say what days don't work for people and, and work backwards.
I'm good any day, that's all.
Okay. Dave's flexible.
You can be unflexible.
Uh let's look at the calendar.
Thursday works good for me.
Thursdays are good for you.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, the Thursday, Thursday.
Thursday.
Worked out.
We will have this.
I will do my best for Thursday. Would not yet, because my schedule's getting all weird again.
Well, you know, as soon as I think a day works, it doesn't, that's not a good day, so pick a day.
Okay. So we will shoot for Thursdays. Um oh, no, we'll go here.
The road show, April twentieth, happens to be a Thursday. Maybe that's a good day to meet afterwards, 'cause things will kind of be fresh in our minds, those are most of the times.
Okay. So if we did the Thursdays and we didn't-
Is our, is our goal to have our work done before Brian leaves?
I don't know if we're gonna be able to, but I mean, I'm, I'm not, I'm not going to invite him to these meetings because I want us to be able to dig in and not kind of be directed. And so um he, if we have questions even after he leaves or not done with it, he will respond to our questions and provide whatever help he can from wherever he is. We also have access to the CFO in Post Falls who will help us, uh Post Falls School District, Katie, and then also the one in Cordillane. So yeah. I think my, I just wanna make sure that we, I know we can amend the budget, so I'm not worried about that part of it. I just wanna make sure we are filling out the proper paperwork and turning things in in the way that we're supposed to to the state.
Okay. Are we filling in every other week movement or a weekly movement? Because we have one, two, three, four, five. Why is that there? We have five um, let me put that there. We have a no. Oh, Chrissy, yeah, that, I'm cleared by Becky. I need to go to the counter. Oui, sorry. Don't worry. We have five um Thursdays before the thirtieth. So we could potentially do an every other week thing. Um I also don't wanna get us so burnt out that we're like, "I wanna look at another number, just do it." Because that's not beneficial for anybody.
Yeah. You know, my thinking is that our third session should be after the, the road show.
Road show, okay.
Mm-hmm.
Uh and maybe two before that.
Okay.
And we may end up having a, a fourth session even, you know, the time we get the information from the state, depending on how pernicious and consequential it might be, you know, to sort through.
Right, 'cause we know for sure we're going back to ADA. So Brian's anticipating that's about a two thousand dollar reduction, I mean, two million dollar reduction. But he's anticipating that our percentage of the three hundred and thirty million should be about four to four and a half additional dollars. So we might, well, we should net to-
It really depends on how much that gets earmarked.
Exactly.
And what, yeah.
And we know a big part of it is salaries. Mm-hmm. But then, yeah, we can flip things around in other places, so.
And, and we don't expect it to all flow, that's discretionary. But let's see.
There is an increase in discretionary and the, I haven't heard any earmarks for the discretionary dollarship. So that will be helpful.
Um I would say the sixth, the twentieth and the fourth.
Okay?
April, April fourth?
No, May, May fourth.
Oh, May fourth.
April sixth, April twentieth and May fourth.
Okay.
So the, my only caution with that is we do have IBV that we've got to do and Brooke's blood pressure is um a little bit higher than we'd like it to be because uh we've got contracts that we have to be able to get out too. So if we don't finish our work till May fourth, then we really can't start talking to the LVA until after that, so.
Give us, give us a quick overview of your timelines for contracts.
We typically send them out over Memorial, or just go for the Friday before Memorial Day weekend.
So uh third week, the third week of May and somewhere in there, correct?
Yeah. It's just now, there's just so many announcements.
The thirtieth is back a few, the-
Yeah, back a week.
Thirtieth, the thirteenth and then the twenty-seventh. Thirtieth, the thirteenth and then the twenty seventh because then they'll have known what happened at the legislative
Right.
roadshow.
Mm-hmm.
But if we need to tweak them, then that should still give us enough time.
Correct.
So which dates did you just say?
Yeah. The thirtieth, the thirteenth and the twenty seventh.
Um, yep. Mm-hmm.
Oh, like next Thursday then?
Mm-hmm. Would we be ready?
Um, we could be. I just was gonna be visiting my husband.
Spring break. Oh.
Oh, okay, for that weekend.
Um.
Well, we could.
So we might have to just hit two, yeah, two weeks in a row.
After that. No.
Sixth, thirteenth and twenty seventh.
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that works.
And I can change my plans if I.
No, 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 we're good.
Yeah.
We can do the sixth, the thirteenth and the twenty seventh, okay.
Yeah, we'll just do the, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Sixth, thirteenth, fourteenth.
Yeah.
Is that good?
Start timing.
Lynn Lynn and I will be in the district Monday and Tuesday next week if you wanted to do a non-Thursday. I'm not hitting over Portland till Wednesday. We're gonna hit up businesses Monday, Tuesday to talk about the ladies. I'll just bring that up there.
I'm good, five thirty or six, that doesn't doesn't. Okay.
Whatever, works, works.
Okay. All right, let's just put it six, I will shoot for five thirty, but I'd really prefer six, just chucking too much.
Just be sure.
For six, I think. Yeah, yeah.
That's fine.
Will these be considered budget workshops or budget working session?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
What's the difference?
Workshop allows input from everybody that needs help.
Okay.
Whereas if we have a budget meeting for us to look at it, you know, anybody's free to come, but there's not a lot of.
Okay, let's do the workshop before.
People should be able to have conversations.
Do you want them to have while we're trying to figure it out? That might be.
Working session. Wait a minute, working sessions?
Yeah.
Work sessions?
Yeah, mm-hmm. Yeah.
Instead of workshop.
Okay.
Yeah. We could have the maybe the last one be a workshop.
After we've kind of.
After we've kind of gotten, yeah, just to get that final input from people, yeah.
Well, that's. That's what the hearing's for, the budget hearing that we have to have.
Oh.
That's exactly what that is for, is for the public to come and give us input after we sort of
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
got things neatly organized, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I have you, I you know, yeah, I have no problem with the public coming, I think in though while we're trying to concentrate and really figure out where we're going, it would
Yeah. Yeah.
nice not to have a bunch of outside influence at the moment, okay? That's my my only thought on it.
All right.
So working sessions?
We could start with IBB um prior to the thirtieth if there are language things in the negotiated agreement you want us to address that don't have money tied to them, we can work on those things ahead of time.
Okay. Do you wanna send me the IBB thing?
Sure. And I will send you the IBB thing.
Redline it.
I'll just send it to the whole board.
Perfect.
Yeah, you have to send it to me. It's all you have to do is search the drive. I really don't like all that stuff cluttering my email and it's right there.
Really?
Okay.
I can never find it, so we have just to improvise. You just click in IBB and look, see, all the agendas come up, everything comes up, agreements come up.
It's actually. I'll s- I'll send it to you.
Well, that's why I'm gonna edit it in an email.
You're busy.
No, 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 hold on.
I'm gonna.
You can get a link directly to it.
Yeah. I can save it and do it again. So I do the IBB, that's what I get.
Twenty one. I've got a PDF signed to grant that for twenty thirty. I got PDFs.
Yeah, and I don't know what its name.
And see maybe you.
We'll type the agreement in there. So.
It's on the district website, so I will send it to you.
So I mean, I'm not trying to be totally nuts, but.
See, right here. So if you type in the twenty twenty two.
I've got the twenty twenty two, yeah. I get nothing.
Oh, yeah, I don't know.
See? Saving it.
I'm saying it could be because you were part of the team, the workshop thing? No.
No?
Okay, just to be this.
It's just there, I don't know why you're just using. Uh, you're not a child.
She has a behind the scenes laptop.
The response.
You were denied access?
I would take that other hand.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Well.
It's safe.
Oh, yeah, I don't know.
Okay, I'm sending it, I just, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I have no idea why we all get special and unique drives, but we do. Okey doke, um. So we have the budget schedule worked out.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, moving on to the action items. Um we have the resolution for the supplemental levy election that we need to either approve or deny.
I remove approval of the resolution for the supplemental levy election.
Is there any comment, questions, conversations that need to happen? Okay, good, open. I guess my concern, we're after looking at this and comparing it kind of to the to the budget, um our budget literally says that for security, for example, we have a hundred and sixty eight thousand dollar budget. And yet we have safety and security needs of three hundred and forty one thousand on our resolution. Okay. I feel like they should and that's that's just the security that's in the general fund, I don't think I didn't see any in other um.
There are there are two armed guards that are are at least one that's paid for out of title five or four. One of them is uh safety is allowed, so there's salaries that are coming.
Okay, but if they're paid out of that, then this is we're still talking general fund dollars, the title dollars are separate dollars that that's revenue and an expense
Mm-hmm. Right.
in a separate category, we're talking about levy and general fund dollars coming in, so but if we have more budget for security or if we're intending to do I don't know, I just feel like this this breakdown of dollars is not as transparent as people are asking us to be.
Yeah, they they are definitely asking us for more specificity.
Mm-hmm.
Can I ask a question? Okay, so we're asking more in the resolution versus what's currently budgeted?
Yes.
Wasn't the intent to add an another armed guard each year? So wouldn't that isn't that why? Um.
This that's more than doubling, we're not paying an armed guard a hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
No, but I.
So that's my.
Could be other expenses.
Right.
Right, but I so but.
But if there's other expenses, why don't we have that intention in our budget? I mean, this is, I don't know.
In the, yeah, in the budget, I don't know if Brian does, I don't know how Brian has it all put together, so I don't know if personnel is, I would guess that the personnel part is separate from like all of our security cameras and the software licenses that go with that, that's all part of the safety program. Um there's a there's key, there's usually a line item for like the ammunition. Um um we had to upgrade weapons this year, so there's this different line item in a different category. I don't I I'm not sure where Brian done all those numbers. I don't know the budget inside now like he does, but um my guess is that that what the line item you're looking at is some of the personnel costs.
Are you really matching that against?
Oh, the budget, this this is this is my own cheat sheet that I pull categories together.
Oh.
So we have instructional, cause.
Okay. And you got security here.
Yeah.
So this is the amount that you found in the current budget.
This is in the general fund in the budget, yes.
What are you getting?
And this is the fifty thousand, here's the budget.
Is that that's the specifics, safe and drug free schools line items?
Well, there's a security program, yeah, six, six, seven code line thirty four.
Security program.
It's one sixty eight, three eighty seven is the proposed budget. See, I was balancing to that, the fifty thousand, eight sixty for the general fund.
Okay.
This is the twenty three budget, right, we don't have a twenty four budget to go off of, right, but this is this is the summary when I got into the line item detail of the budget.
Mm-hmm.
So you said that.
And safety was one sixty eight, three eighty seven.
Yeah, he's definitely he's definitely not gonna have the personnel costs in the same line item as all the the hardware. The the um keyless entry panels that we're adding, security cameras, the licenses that go with all of those, those are not gonna be in that same line item.
But that's what I'm trying to understand is where are they?
Probably in technology in that area, but I I that's probably what he's doing is combining all of it. So I think that's where we get to have a better understanding of the budget if it might get in front of us. When he put those numbers together, he told me that he pulled out everything related to security and that's the cost, that's what we spent this year.
Well, so if that's what we spent, then that's not on the budget. Because he should have pulled out the budgeted amounts to.
Uh well, that's what I meant, sorry, I missed.
Oh, I missed.
The budgeted amounts, yeah.
Okay.
For the full security program.
Yeah, I think that that's I get that there's also the activities of one million, one hundred and sixty four and we have one point three million in extracurriculars and athletics. I get that things can be in other categories, but that's what I want to be able to provide to people that are wanting a a better, cleaner, I mean, if we can't even figure it out, how can we expect them to?
Right, well, and what's what's challenging is if we put this on here and the levy doesn't pass, does that mean everything that we put on here is just automatically gone? Because if that's the case, then we have to have that conversation, like are we willing to say that the safety and security
Mm-hmm.
program when we had a school shooting yesterday again is gone.
Mm-hmm.
And that's a bigger conversation, but we have to, I mean, the resolution language has to be submitted by Monday.
Mm-hmm.
So what's the other part of this? That's hard. I can ask Brian, um if you, I can ask Brian to separate out what's the cost of the personnel for security, what's the what are the then the the equipment and the hardware type security pieces and have those as two separate items since it doesn't look like he's got them both in that same.
I just want to know that the that these amounts come from the budget somewhere.
Are from somewhere. Okay.
Cause that's never been shown to us, like where where prove these numbers.
Okay.
Um.
Yeah, there is some other securities and some other funds, um don't know, I just looked for when there is a title uh or B.
Yep.
That has a ninety one thousand, three hundred and thirty nine.
But that's in that fund and that would have its own revenues coming in, that's.
Right, and then the other, so that's well, that's what I'm saying, and the safe drug da da, that's the only thing I can think of, maybe he took all those numbers and made it, I don't know, you'd have to add them all up and see.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, there's fifty three seven in the um safe drug free schools.
Is does that show his revenue?
Um, no expenditures.
Or so. So so that's matching, that's a that's an annual grant we get from, that's the only safe uh school safety money we get from the state and so it.
But it's an expenditure.
Right, so there's there's a there's a revenue.
It would have a corresponding revenue as well.
Well.
Okay, yeah, and it's the same amount, so we just.
All funds have a a one sheet or two sheet revenue and then a an expense, a breakdown following in the budget.
So it's fif- yeah, it's fifty three seven going out, then we have fifty three seven coming in and he applied it to one of the personnel costs.
So I'm curious where revenue is.
And then how what what did you say the discrepancy was between the extracurricular that's on there and then what you found?
Um. There's another expense. I didn't fit it all for ninety one thousand, three thirty nine. The activities?
Mm-hmm, what did you say there?
It's um I don't see, the resolution says one point three million.
Mm-hmm.
And our and what is in the budget under that interscholastic um program is one ninety one hundred and sixty four thousand.
So some of that might be in uh transportation costs. I just I I would have to ask Brian where
Mm-hmm.
where those numbers are coming from.
Well, and what Brooke said made made sense too under the safety and security for some of that quite possibly to be under technology and stuff, but I just wanna make sure that I'm okay with listing these numbers, but we need to be able to tie them back to
Our budget.
something in our budget that is at least that big, not less than what we're asking for.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
So um I wanna just make sure that that's very clear and that we can show the breakdown of, you know, um the total and what that chunk coming out of our total general fund budget looks like, cause right now we have the unappropriated, six point eight million dollars under unappropriated. People are gonna ask, why are you asking for nine million dollars if you have six million dollars unappropriated? You're not even putting those in a category or needing those in a in a specific place in your budget.
Is that not our fund balance?
Hm?
Isn't that our fund balance?
Fund balance.
No, the beginning fund, the beginning balance. Mm, I don't think that's unappropriated.
Yeah, I thought that's what that was. So I don't I don't think we have.
No, cause our fund balance is nine nine point four, cause that that would be in the revenues, that's unappropriated in the expenditures. I put the wrong thing there, but um yeah.
I I don't think what Brian's on anticipating having six million dollars to add to the nine million we already have, those are, so I know that it says unappropriated, I I just he needs to answer that question.
Yeah.
I don't know if that'll be answered to that, but um.
Like I said, I'm I'm okay with our our resolution being the way it is. Like I said, I'm, I'm okay with our, our resolution being the way it is, as long as we can show those dollars fitting into our budget.
Right, so it doesn't look like we're popping out the numbers.
Mm-hmm. Oh, we'll just add two hundred thousand here, two hundred thousand here, and.
Any additional questions, conversations on that?
So I'll ask Brian to send the board, um, the line item amounts that he used, are those different?
Yeah, cause I mean, I just, I, I just searched the, um, budget with respect to that specific line item,
Or salaries?
For the one sixty eight, three seventy, and the two line items don't even equal that, so I don't know, again, this is more trying to understand the whole thing.
Our budget. Yeah, well, and the, the one sixty eight has, um, eighty five thousand
Okay.
in salaries, thirty five thousand in benefits, twenty one thousand in purchased services, and twenty five thousand in supplies and materials, so.
But when I scanned the document or that specific account, that six, six, seven line item, whatever, it's security,
Mm-hmm.
there was only ninety one thousand, three thirty nine, and then another fifty three thousand, seven hundred, which equals one forty five, oh, thirty nine. So I don't know, that's where I'm trying to, to reconcile the one sixty eight.
Yeah, there's just so many different line items that are used when you go into that security and other items, and so that's where
Mm-hmm.
he's just gonna have to get those answers from Brian on how to.
Yeah, what, what we need is, is a backup sheet for each one of these categories.
Mm-hmm.
That spells out what the dollar amounts are, that maybe it's, you have ten items long to total three hundred and forty one thousand, but the total should match.
Match, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. And I think that's what should, so, and that, and that's a, that's an appropriate concern.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
That'd be easy if all we had, you know, I know we get what we get, um, on the monthly basis, but if you had it in a spreadsheet, it would even be easy to track yourself, you know, every month, or, you know, so you can total and you can do with the numbers what you would like to see with the numbers, so we could actually have an idea of what was going in certain ones.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
I, I don't know what happens internally now, I know when I was superintendent, we, and those guys, we had green bar printouts.
Well, this is, this is what we get now.
And, and, you know, I got a green bar printout every month as superintendent, it was about that thick, which had all the backup information, and I would go through that to see where we were in every category, and so, so forth. And, you know, one of the problems I see with going to the heavy technology age is you don't have the ability to do that.
Well, I think you do, I think.
You, you, you do, but it's, to me, it's not the same, I mean, I'm, I'm so, uh, used to old school.
Yeah.
If I can't see it on paper, I have work.
No, they should be able to print it out, my point is, is that it's definitely available, it's a lack of understanding of how to make the software work. It's almost ninety nine point nine percent of the time training, and people get stuck in, you know, one leaving trains the one coming in, so they just train them with their bad habits or their lack of knowledge or their workarounds. But I understand what you're saying, it's easy to take a piece of paper, that's why I like the spreadsheet, cause then I don't have to ask all those questions.
Yeah.
Find the answer on my own, you know, but otherwise, I'm constantly, you know, trying to, um, compile a, you know, PDF into something else, a spreadsheet or whatever, to get the numbers, and then, you know, you end up with formatting issues and all that stuff.
Yeah, 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 and that, and that's my, my, that's really.
Right.
Well, that's why I had to, that's why I had to do my own spreadsheet to pull it out and.
Yeah. Right. Cause then you could, if you had it like that, you could answer your own questions in like five minutes, you know, it wouldn't even take that long.
Mm-hmm.
But instead, it's a three-year, uh, garavel to get anything, you know, and you still don't get what you're asking for. So. Yeah, I would be interested in that compensation, what that looks like for the certified classified administrative, but there again, sort of gonna have to understand a little bit more of that, um, for budgeting purposes, because, uh, well, anyways, we had a, a motion, I guess I don't want my brain squalling the budget totally. Yeah, we do have a motion.
Oh, we do?
We do. Bob made the motion.
I'll second the motion.
Having a motion and a second on paper, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bearing none, the motion carries. Uh, moving on to the school plant facilities reserve fund levy, uh. We need to either approve or deny that language, that resolution.
And the only change based on the motion from last Thursday was the term.
Yeah.
Um, so that was changed.
Do we need to have any conversation, discussion, or?
Conversation, discussion.
Anything, dialogue? No, this one's just, this one doesn't give me, we don't have to do a breakdown or anything, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's just, I'll move to approve the school plant facilities reserve fund levy election resolution.
Second.
Having a motion and a second on paper, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Bearing none, the motion carries. Uh, moving on to the classified administrator salary matrix, matrix. Um, yeah.
And this is just a, a draft, but, um, we have had conversation about the CFO's column being a little bit out of, out of alignment with job responsibilities and with the current one going out and a new one coming in, it was the perfect time to, to take a look at that. Um, so we just made some adjustments to the starting, and then the steps are all in, is it one point five percent or one point eight percent?
Can I see the mouse for a little bit, so I can make that one, we can read it.
Um, um, so if you, if the starting salary is not where you want it to be, we can adjust that. We just made the incremental changes are the same as in the other columns, as far as the percentage goes.
For some reason, it's two percent, I don't know why, that, that one is two percent.
Oh, so that one's different than the other one?
Yeah, it shouldn't be, the other one is one and a half, and one point. So that needs to be changed.
We just weren't sure where to start that one, cause we didn't want it to be so low that we don't get quality candidates applying for the position, but we also.
Well, I do have some questions about what's on it presently, and I think maybe it would be something that we can decide what we want to s- what we're starting, the, um, CFO in which column? Um, first, my question was, what's the purpose of lane E?
Oh, I, well, that's a, we didn't even think about that when we were looking at, we just stayed with the lane, but the purpose of, oh, uh, lane E, because there's nobody in it?
Right.
Um.
I mean, I guess a better understanding for me would be what puts a person in which lane, I mean, what are the qualifiers?
Uh, it's, um, the number of people supervised, um, and just the level of responsibility that goes with the, with the position. Um, lane E, I think is there because, uh, Brian, the CFO lane was so far above where lane D was, that when it was put together, that lane was added in case we needed to reclassify somebody and eventually move people over.
It makes it seem like it was just put in there to make it look like his was alive.
And when.
It was, it was, that's exact, I mean, that was the explanation we got, that was exactly why it was there, um.
So when, when Brian originally, um, did this matrix, he did it after he compared all the surrounding areas of those particular positions and where they were placed, and that's how he built that matrix off of that. Is to keep it in line with other districts.
Yeah, when I looked at the actual, actual, um, spreadsheet that did have, then none of that information was on here, I did find some just searching the drive. Um, there were, uh, multiple tabs, um, at the bottom, it's the LJSD, the classified admin, it has all of the years, and there is a comparison and an analysis tab to it, um. So that, yeah, the grade F, um, from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty was even more than this is here.
Yeah. Why are we reclassifying the treasurer and the transportation director positions?
Are you?
Uh, we, we did that last year.
When was that?
That was when I brought the, um, that's already in place for this year, I, that came to the board last year.
I don't recall the treasurer's salary coming to the board, nor moving them from a C to a D.
Um.
Because the treasurer previously was in category C, um, and this year, or according to this salary matrix, it's category D.
Yeah, that was part of what the board approved last, summer, last fall. Um, and the reason for that is the treasurer oversees, when you look at the classification of each of those columns, um, the treasurer oversees all of the assistant treasurers, and so, um, that, that moved that position into that, uh, column due to the level of supervision and the job duties.
Oh, I think I know, so are you talking about when you brought the total matrix for all of the inquiry, okay, yes, yeah, it was.
This should have been, this salary matrix should have been changed then to reflect that, so that we're not looking at what we think is, like, current and what is proposed draft policy for the new year?
Are they different?
Yeah, this shows them in C, the transportation director and the treasurer in C on the twenty three, and the twenty four shows them both in D.
I don't know.
So, this didn't get updated.
That might be the wrong one then, if you go out to the website, our website, or wait a second, maybe not, hold on. So it might have not.
But why aren't, wasn't.
I might have sent you the wrong one then for, or somebody, cause I didn't put in the old one, I only sent Rosanna the.
Draft.
The, yeah, the drafts, so somebody probably put in, found an older one that was in there. Do you want me to email you guys the one?
I'd rather have the spreadsheet, so I could actually see.
So you can see all the tabs, yeah. So I sent that to you.
Okay.
Um, and I sent you one yesterday, it has what was proposed, and then the current one.
Okay, in the e- the email, what you said.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
And you, we did your legend that you were looking for and everything.
Yeah.
And if you remember, in the fall, we separated out the, um, uh, well, actually, not the fall, we separated the job description, so on the salary schedule, we have the payroll special, no, the accounts, the accounting specialist in one column, and then the treasurer's in the column next to them, because as soon as the board appoints a treasurer, they're now supervising all of the assistant treasurers, so bumps them over to, so that's the.
To the other column?
Yeah, that's why. I mean, we have a lot of work we have to do on these, there's so many things that are coming up as far as, you know, levy negotiations, what's gonna happen with the budget at this day, and so, I mean, we have a lot of work to revise. Right now, we're just want, I wanna be able to get a good CFO, and so I'm just looking at a starting, just a range to post, because I don't have anybody that's applying right now, because nobody's gonna apply if they don't know what the amount is.
Yeah, I agree, this is the, what we really need to concentrate on tonight, and then gather all the information for all the other stuff, so we can move forward with.
Right, and I would rather not even talk about messing with the other thing until we know what's happening with the levy.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, I agree, a hundred percent, I sort of, I felt like it was the, you know, what do they call it, the horse before the.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, well.
Carrying the horse, yeah. I just, I was like, why are we even deciding the matrix? Cause it says approve or deny the matrix, and I was like.
Yeah.
So let, just so the board knows what happened, um, when I started, um, when I asked Michelle about the, um, CFO and making that change, because this was the perfect time to do it, she, and this was before anything happened with the levy, she just had said, if we're gonna mess with the matrices, can you just bring all of your proposed changes at once?
Yeah.
Which is what we did, and I had given that to Rosanna, well, then we ended up with the situation we ended up with, and so, um, we kinda went back and forth, as to, do we just take everything off, and it got kinda late in the, in the game, so. My recommendation is we would table everything, except, with the exception of the making decision on the CFO column, and then the rest of it can be determined.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's perfect. We should have maybe started with that.
Yeah.
Oh, well, that's right.
Um, so I guess my first question would be, and I didn't see that, and I saw it from, uh, previous years, but there again, what does it look like from our surrounding districts for this position? Or do we have an idea?
So, yeah, I said, I think you guys had a spreadsheet in executive session at one time, and it, he really, for what, he was, he wasn't all out, out of whack,
Yeah.
but in comparison to an assistant superintendent position, he was out of whack. But like, you have in Corta Lane, they have, you know, your, your finance person, but then they have a business and operations person, and then, of course, they had more assistant superintendents, so it was, it was just basically the model, and they were, I think, if I recall, some of them were higher than he was, or they either had more of what he did, um, in that spreadsheet, I don't have it in front of me, but it was in one of your exec sessions. Randy, I think you're nodding, cause you recall it, or.
Getting that little spreadsheet with the different amounts on it, yeah.
Yeah, well, there is, I just didn't know what year that was for, so that is, that LJSD, the classified admin salary matrix,
I don't remember.
That's current.
There is the analysis tab on there that does have, um, that information on there. Doesn't have people's names, there's nobody, can I see the keyboard?
Yes ma'am.
Yeah, just so I could show everybody what I'm actually looking at.
The, the information that was in the executive session that, uh, Brooke provided was, is what's happening this year in the other districts. So that, that document is probably the most current. Oh, yeah, Brian put together that house. Yeah.
Yes, I wasn't sure how current this was.
That is probably, so we've implemented, I'm seeing, I think we implemented this shortly, how far back did those tabs go?
Um, the tabs go.
Nineteen twenty.
Yeah.
Nineteen twenty. That could potentially be when we revised this, so it's probably about two, I would say two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen.
Yeah. Yeah, I didn't look at any history, I didn't wanna, even though it's only a view only, let's see, um, or anything, and I didn't know how current these were.
Yeah, definitely prior to the cost of living, and it's occurred April twenty nineteen.
Yeah. So April twenty nineteen. Yeah, so if we had this information like this, that would be. So this is four years.
I mean, and basically, the spreadsheet that I sent you was for the CFO.
Right.
Was pretty much similar to this. It just identified the model of like each district and, you know, what they had, um, as far as, um, leadership in their buildings and how. in their buildings and how they divided and conquered and- Why am I not, where is, uh?
Oh, right, right, okay, yeah, because the columns ran the other way, that's right, I never looked at this. When did you send that, Brooke?
Here, let me see if I can find it, um.
I even just looked it from, I got everything from you and let-
Okay, let me look at it.
We know the name of it.
Hold on, I, it was C, I think it started with CFO.
But I think it was put in our board meeting, that meeting too, but I just don't remember when it was.
There we go.
That's it.
Did you find it?
Yep, that's it.
Oh, yeah. So, yeah, like Coeur d'Alene, they have 10 people in their finance team. They have a direct, they have a CFO and they have a director of operations. And Brian is both those positions. And with that, you know, you're looking at $214,000 between the two. And so, um, and then they have two assistant superintendents. Plus then they have a deputy superintendent. I mean-
Can't really compare us very well.
Yeah, they're twice our size.
Yeah, so even if you look at Post Falls, and I have in there equipped student enrollment on those.
Yeah, that's helpful too, yeah.
Sandpoint's the closest to us as far as enrollment. And they had, at that time, when I did this, their position was posted. And they had a wide range. The CFO there is currently making 171, 792. And they, yeah, and they advertised it between 89.5 and 135.
Who, where, what district?
That was-
Lake Pondure, where do you think? Okay.
So, yeah, their CFO makes more than, you know, quite a bit more than our superintendent. It's kind of interesting. I was in shock when I saw that, but their superintendent makes more.
Okay, so if we look at just direct, so we have one, two, three, four, five. If you just look at this column here. Uh, we have a bunch of text in there, I was gonna see what the average is.
It's by the average, yeah.
Yeah.
Who?
Well, we can just do it old school here.
What? So here's something back. Yeah.
How is it, let me see.
Ready, hit post, I haven't figured where it's supposed to be, I should pay yours.
128.
115, 548. I don't know what we wanna put in there for that one, 135?
Yeah.
And then 127, 707.
How many do we have there?
Five.
So there you go, about 123 is the average.
I think where is he currently now? He's currently 127. So like I said, he's kinda within that, he's within where, you know.
Yeah, but what's the average enrollment in the district?
Okay, well, let's get this in there, 120, 20, 29. Is it already, did we just say 123 or?
Yeah, that.
Let me see what, this is the average.
The other part of that average though, because you were counting Coeur d'Alene in there and you're only counting on half of their actual department.
So that-
Right, but we're just looking, because we took all those away, right? All we have left is CFO, we took all the operations and everything away.
We took that away from that position, so-
Yeah, okay.
There we go.
Which kinda leads me to the question, if you happen to get an applicant or two that has qualifications to handle the rest of that, who you would like to have?
I would be willing to at some point hand that over. I, I actually selfishly would like a year where I, I can build some relationships with the operations team. I don't feel like I have a good understanding of what's happening in each of those departments. Because Brian has worked directly with them and I'm not kept in the loop. So I, I need to create kind of an environment where I'm, I need to be in the know. And so I, I-
You do, absolutely.
Yeah, so I need to, this gives me an opportunity to, to build that.
Question is kinda what, what do you give up?
At this point?
Squeeze that in.
I don't know. We, you know, we meet weekly as a district leadership team. And I just, uh, we started this week and I'm, I'm bringing the directors into that meeting. So anything related to, they have a request for a budgetary item, we're having a discussion about it. If it's, needs to go to the board, it'll come to you. If it's something we can put off, we'll put it off. So, um, they're meeting together as a team so they can work together as a team? Exactly.
That's a great idea!
I know, I know. So, um, so we're trying to work smarter not harder.
So is this our cost, our typical cost right now?
Sometimes it's good for different people to understand what other departments needs are to, to understand that they're not the only ones.
Okay.
And so if you go, if you can scroll, yes, so he's at the very bottom of that right there.
Right.
We had actually, what we had proposed was to lower that. But I, I, I don't think we should. I think we should keep this column the same as it is. Just, if we could just do a range of, let's say, between 104 and then maybe halfway down to 112, depending on experience. So give them, let's say, maybe up to five years of experience. So they don't max out right off the bat. That's kinda my thought process.
It gives more room for-
I mean, average is pretty close to comparable, even if we averaged the student population and the, uh, salaries.
Yep.
Yeah, I, when Brooke looked at that, I think where we found we were a little bit out of whack was where we, what we were paying our assistant superintendent.
And that's she will show you that too.
We'll talk about that later. After the meeting.
So you're thinking that this actually, this, uh, your recommendation, Brooke, is to start somewhere between the-
104 and 112.
Okay.
As long as the board is comfortable with leaving the numbers in column F. The way they are.
I don't think that you will get a quality applicant forcing that column down.
I disagree.
So we have to, so our single decision actually is twofold. And if we do the 104 to the 112, that also includes leaving this column, um.
The way it is.
Yeah.
I mean, if they, if this document, where did it go? I've got to leave it down. It's in the drive thing, hold on, I gotta find it.
Can you pass me that, now?
It's right there.
Um. I was thirsty.
I didn't get my picture.
Yeah. I just, I mean, if they currently, if Lake Pondure currently advertised at 89.5 to 135, I mean-
More heater.
Hey, just put 85 to 135 and then just, we'll discuss that interview, whatever it's called.
But if we're gonna say 85, then you have to adjust that column so that starting call, the starting cell is 85,000. That's really what we're asking is to set the-
That column.
That column so that we can say we're gonna give up to five years of experience and the range is this. I mean, we could start at the, the 100 and go to the 108. I, I'm apprehensive. I mean, I, I, I'm apprehensive that we're gonna find a quality candidate that understands, you know, school finance or has audited school finances. Anything like that mid-year anyways, I feel not-
They won't be coming until July first.
Yeah, you're, you're, you're talking about really attracting a CFO from another school district that has background experience. So what to do on the 181?
I mean, we can, we could lowball it, but see what we get for like right now.
So the only way that can happen is if we attract somebody from a smaller school district who wants to make some career move or salary move. This is possible. Right, boys, I'm-
I just don't agree with you throw the highest ball out there because you're gonna get the best candidate. I don't agree with that at all, I never have. And I just think it's, we are so reactive and we think that the money is the answer. Because we've been stipending everybody for the last six years that in order to get people to do work, we have to throw more money, throw more money, throw more money. And I think we have really soured a lot of people's perspectives with our district. Because in their mind, well, it's just about the money. If they want you to do anything, they're gonna throw money at you. That's not how life should be working. And it really bothers me that the whole motivation is we'll just throw more money in this pile and we'll get the better person. That's not accurate at all, in my opinion.
Well-
That also bothers me too, but the thing is, we're also competing with other districts. And this is such a specialized position. It's already, we're already set up. It's just limited. I'm, I'm not asking-
Maybe we can flip. Because since they've lured our CFO away, their CFO obviously quit for a reason. I can't imagine why, but maybe she needs a job.
She's retiring.
Who knows?
Yeah. That's what I asked.
Yeah, she's retiring. I mean, there are, we've got school districts in Washington who are riffing people because they've been living on their S R dollars and using those for salaries. And they're at the cliff and they're, they're getting rid of, you know, 100 teachers. Um, I, there may be some district office people who might have to go. I don't know how many CFO type people districts like Central Valley and Spoken Public Schools have. They may have to cut some of those positions. There may be people looking, but- CFOs also come out of law firms, I'm sorry, Bob. CFOs always also come out of CPA firms. Um, a lot of them, like, one of the best CFOs in Coeur d'Alene, she was actually an auditor for Magnus and McHugh. And that's how she jumped into that position. She understood school finances because she audited. So it's not just-
Well, there was also one that went to Coeur d'Alene that did the same thing. And that did not work out at all.
That did not work out.
Yeah, it was a, it was a shock to the system because he was used to auditing and didn't know how to actually do the work. He just knew how to review other people's work.
Exactly, yeah. But those, those are the type of tools that you're looking at. You're very limited on, when it comes to school finance. I'm worried you can pull from.
Yeah, I'm, I completely agree from business since you look around you, you find the average, you look at all that. But then when the nitty gritty comes, we have to look at us too, right? I mean, like, yeah, you look at all that to take it into consideration, but really what do we want? And it is, it is true, you get what you pay for. I mean, yeah, there's a bad apple here, here or there, but, um. I worked for a scientist one time and he, he taught me that. He would never pay anybody that worked for him under a certain wage because he fully believed that. But the better pay will either cause the person to rise to the occasion. Because if they're a bad apple, it doesn't matter, they're gonna float to the top and you're gonna have to skim them off anyways. Yeah, so, you know, we might get somebody that just wants to slow down a little bit. You know, working for this size of a district would be, well, depending on where you're coming from. Working for a district this size and in this community might be a huge relief to somebody. And they wouldn't mind that they're making less than, you know, and the cost of living and everything else. I mean, I, I think as a community, we have a lot of value of that too. But I do believe in paying people what they're worth. I know there are some jobs I look at at government level that I would never take for that. I wouldn't fill out the application if they're offering, and I don't say that to be prideful, but I know the work that goes behind it and it's just that the wage isn't worth it, you know? Benefits are not. So I do wanna make sure that we get somebody who's gonna stay and that we're not just gonna be a stepping stone until they find a, a better thing. You know, which obviously there's always that risk, but-
I wanted to get them in here. For the most part, they, they like working with us. Or, you know, we're, we're fun to work with, they'll stick around. But, um, we just have to get the right person. And there could be people who have moved to our area who have some of this in their background from other states. Who might-
And they're just sitting waiting for the right position.
Exactly, yeah. So we just don't know yet, but-
Very true.
But I do, I do agree with Ramona that I think the wage has to be at a level that entices people who are qual, highly qualified.
So, so what's the recommendation?
I'll go back to where we are here.
Well, I, um, I mean, I think a compromise between what Michelle's talking about and what Brooke is saying is the draft that we presented. It's a little bit reduced from what it currently is. Um, but it's still starting at six figures.
So that, right there? That's acceptable to me.
And, I mean, we could start there. And if we put the range out of 100,000 to 108, 243, and we get nobody qualified, we may have to come back and have another conversation at the starting point.
So Lake Pondure advertised 89 to 135 and the position went from 172, pretty much, 171?
And I'm fairly confident that, that it was the higher end that was granted.
Are you suggesting that we allow no more than five years' experience for a person coming in?
But yet we're asking for at least five years' experience.
Right, so that, they, we can-
I was looking at that too.
Yeah, we can-
At least five years.
We can give years' experience. The hard part is, is the whole thing is only 10 years. So if you have somebody who's got 20 years of experience, we can only give 10. And then you're, you're already at the very top of the salary schedule. I, I, I don't like saying that we're gonna give, you've got all this experience, we really want it, but we're only gonna pay you for this, for, you know, some random number like five.
I mean, why, why wouldn't we advertise the full scale? I guess is what I'm saying. You know, if somebody's got 14 years' experience, they come in, they'll step out 10. They're not gonna have to assume that with a little luck over time, there'll be some increase in that.
Right.
They need to understand that that is the, that, that is the position range, not necessarily the hiring range too. I know that that's something that we've run into where I'm at, where we start people. Because it is an entry, I'm just talking about our entry level position that we're, seems like we're constantly hiring for. People see that range and they're like, I have this experience and I'm gonna start here, start in that higher end. But we're listing the position range and that's-
Right. So it's, it's years of experience in that position, is that what you're saying?
No, I'm saying that people think that our position range is where we hire- No, I'm saying that people think that our position range is where we hire. That's the range where they can come in at and we don't. We start them at the base, bottom of the range. But it is an entry level position, so it's a little bit different than this where we do want somebody with some experience.
They would be placed based on experience and the range is a hundred thousand to a hundred and eighteen.
How, how do we get rid of this? This whole step lane, blah, blah, blah. The only reason I say that is because if you look at the teachers, it always frustrates me that the teacher starting's gotta be expected to hang out for six years without a raise.
And we need to work on that, that's-
You know, I mean, that's just craziness, but here-
And yet, we're starting, yeah.
Yeah, look at these guys, man. I mean, you can just go make all kinds of money. And these people, almost all these positions, well, they don't, they have no day-to-day interaction with students with this. It's what we're tasked to take care of. So, can we start? So, how, what is the criteria? So, then, between E and F? Like, how, how do you qualify for lane E or lane F?
Again, I don't know what the, Brian's method was for putting it in, other than in fact, he was already making a certain amount of money and there had to be a column-
Right.
In between to fill that gap.
Right, and that is what we were told early on, that's where it came from. But how do you decide who's in lane A through lane F? Like, it's step one across the board, but how do I know what lane I'm gonna end up in? What is the criteria for that?
So, that was where it came in. He compared against districts. And then he said, this position will be in this column and this position will be in this column, which was-
Well, maybe we need to have an understanding of what positions fall in what columns. That's kind of, that's called a kinds and levels chart.
Yeah.
They need to create a kinds and levels chart that says, this position goes in this column. This position is in this column.
And the why?
Yeah.
Yeah, because there's no way for me as a prospective employee to know how I move through this. Like, what do I have to do to jump lanes to get, the steps, I guess, are, you know, fairly explanatory with the legend. But, you know, how do I get there? How do I know I can move from one to the other, you know?
Unless you move positions, you can't go from one lane to a different lane. But you could, you just take the steps per year.
Right.
So, what you're looking for is what are the qualifying criteria for each lane? So, we know which positions go where.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that doesn't-
And that way too, when we're creating, that, that should be done for all, all classified positions. Not just administrative, but all positions. And we kind of have that pool.
With the class.
So, it's very simple, yeah, so that if we create a new position, we can say, okay, that fits here based on these criteria.
Which we have for the classified salary matrix. And that's crystal clear. This, this was Becky and Brian working together on it, so.
That's my question, if we even need this, do we just pick a salary range and then fix this?
It would be nice to see what we had actually before Becky and Brian started working with this, to figure out how we classified people, what their pay criteria, their pay scales were, et cetera. Respecting that that was several years ago, but just to understand what the district had in place prior to going to this and-
It was very interesting. I, I come forward-
The previous one was very interesting?
Yeah, there wasn't, there wasn't a whole lot of, it didn't make a lot of sense either. So, that's why they said we have to put together a matrix and that's what happened. But I can, I can gather that kind of information for you.
Because I just, I'm curious, you know, how many peo, what, what job titles fit in all these different lanes? Because it could help explain a lot, because if we have lanes without job descriptions, then we need to consider what we're actually doing.
Well, and I think it's a very clear picture of how we value people too, when you start looking at it.
Yeah.
Um, all right, so I guess what are we doing with the CFO, then doing the hundred to the, I think we, I mean, we just gave that, I was looking, oh, but we said five years.
Yeah, so you would wanna do the full range then?
How did we get to one hundred thousand on the, as the, as the starting number early enough?
Well, it was a hundred and, it was a hundred and four and we just decided to start with a friendly number. It truly is a draft. We just wanted to put something out there for you. It is. It is because-
Well, it looks at the decrease, it's in-
Um, it, it's so out of whack from lane E because it was created specifically for a person. I don't know that there's a percentage, the same percentage across. Brooke can ask, answer that question, but if there is, it doesn't exist between lane E and F. So, we, we just said, let's just, we, we know the board was, had talked about maybe decreasing it a little bit. So, that's where we started. That's why it says draft round one. Because we anticipated that there might need to be changes.
Well, and we have a lane A too, and we don't have anybody sitting in that lane either, so.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I wonder if we just decide what our range is gonna be and then come back to this thing and fix this with the other stuff.
When we do all the rest of it.
Because we're still like, you know, maybe they fit in there, maybe they don't. Yeah, we're saying five years, but what if they come with five years of some kind of accounting background or something that really don't know school a whole lot or, you know?
Yep.
So, what are you guys comfortable starting with, when we know that up north? I mean, that is a huge range, ninety, you know, to one thirty-five.
I'm just, I'm sorry. I'm interrupting you.
No.
We have this huge matrices for nine people. That seems a bit-
Yeah, that's why I'm saying let's just pick our way-
Well, they could just be put in the other class. We could have an all-inclusive classified matrix and not have two separate ones and just, well, I don't know how the lanes work out with, between this one and the other one, but we can try and look at that.
The other one, they're hourly. These are salaried positions.
Oh, right, 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 yeah. Do they all supervise somebody?
Well, it, there are those different classifications. Not all of them, no. So, like, our payroll officer doesn't supervise anybody. But that's a specialized position.
Yeah. So, maybe we just run the same-
Run the same range?
Yeah, I think that top number's a little high, but-
Which top number?
This that they did up there, yeah.
Well, that was specifically because that's where they cost.
He could- Yeah. So, what if we did the eighty-nine to the-
Could we make it ninety, just so it sounds better?
Yeah, we do ninety to one twenty or one, but I mean, you know, I don't know. What do you guys wanna do? What, what would you like to see it at, huh?
Oh, I'm, I'm comfortable with the, with my app.
Okay.
You know, and I think what the staff is looking at is trying to get, you know, the six figures on the top of that column so that you get somebody's attention. A lot of people in this day and age, you know, it's kind of what you said a while ago. I'm not gonna spend my time if it's not at least a hundred grand.
Right.
Which, you know, is unfortunate in a way, but I mean, that's the world we live in.
Right, yeah. Cost is cost.
Yeah.
Yeah. Especially if you're young, you're seeing your family.
I would agree, the whole thing probably needs some reworking, but that's not our goal tonight, so.
Right, but, yeah, but whatever you choose for that lane F, you've gotta be comfortable with it landing there and we can work backwards from there to kind of maybe shore up, get rid of the columns we're not using and make that-
Well, if we stick with this, we don't even know we're gonna stick with this, but we could use it as a springboard or a guidepost. Um, so do the one hundred to the, uh-
I think even going to, I, you know, after thinking about it, I think even going down to ninety. You can almost get rid of lane E. Not that that's our goal tonight, obviously, but-
So, you think going back to the nine to ninety to a hundred?
You could almost get rid of lane F if you started at ninety, but then you, you're topping out at the one oh four, four fifty. Again, we can completely rework all of this.
Yeah, we don't care about lanes and all that.
And you may have to if these lanes don't pass.
Yeah, you know, and that's why, you know, I was-
Well, we're gonna have to care a lot more about, there again, I think at that point, these lanes really won't matter then. Because we're gonna have to work backwards by what we're statutorily obligated.
Whoever's left is gonna be frozen, probably.
Right.
Oh, we're just not even gonna talk about that.
Yeah. So, I'm with you with starting at the ninety. Yeah, I think, I do think that's a good starting point.
And then go clear to the one nineteen? Just-
I mean, what do you guys think?
I would do ninety to one twenty-five. I know it's not in the lane.
Yeah.
But, um-
Yeah, we're close to what they did up there.
Stay in your lane.
One thirty-five or one thirty or whatever.
Because if the person doesn't have the years' experience, we're not starting out at one twenty-five. Right, yeah. If they've got ten to fifteen years, then we need to have a conversation.
Right.
Get back into the, I don't want to start my head having to compare. I was, you know, if a person came in with, that would fit at one twenty-five, you know, how's that compare with the systems of governance position? You gotta be a little careful.
Yeah, yeah, that was the other thing we were trying to bring to run matrices.
Right.
Particularly since we're taking some of the responsibility on this.
Yeah, so if we're looking at just CFO, yeah.
That's a key position. There's no doubt about the fact that it's an extraordinarily key position.
Right, oh, yeah.
So, you want somebody who knows what they're doing and has, has a work ethic, but will stay with it and do the job done.
Yeah. Has a good resource, probably, mentors, you know?
But, you know, we're, we're larger than, what, eighty-five percent of the districts in Idaho?
I don't know, that's interesting.
Yeah, I think so. But anyway, so that's a whole host of people out there who, I'm gonna say hopefully there are two or three or four of them that would like to make the move to best school district in Idaho and Great North Idaho living, so.
Yep. And there may be some people who are, kind of get released in Washington who like the looks of Idaho's retirement system and wanna come and work.
Oh, yeah, there, that happens a lot, as you well know. Particularly of administrators, they move back and forth and they'll stick to the other.
Yep. What was your top number when?
Well, I'll squish it down to the one nineteen. I'll squish it down just so that, within a ma, a current matrix and then we can mess with the matrix later.
So, do you ninety to one nineteen for the, okay, I make a motion that we do the ninety to one nineteen for the CFO position?
Second.
Motion and a second, all fair, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing, then the motion carries.
Let me just have the other matrices.
Right, which I would make a motion to table that until we actually sit down and look at all the matrices and, you know.
Mostly think about.
All right, so we have a motion-
And that's both the classified and certified?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Your work.
Say we table, we'll matrices to, all right. So, we have a motion and a second, all fair, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing, then the motion carries. And that concludes our meeting at seven nineteen.
Nice job.
Yay.